I'm going to call the meeting to order. Please rise to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is an open meeting at the Seward, Nebraska government body. The city of Seward provides for the Nebraska Open Means Act in conducting business. A copy of the Nebraska Open Means Act is displayed on the north wall of this meeting room facility as required. Disclosure of meeting recording for our board is posted in the meeting room. A participant's sign-in sheet is available for use by any citizen addressing the council. Who there shall approach the podium, state your name and address for the clerk's record, and are asked to limit remarks to five minutes. All remarks shall be directed to the mayor, who shall determine by his appropriate response shall be made. The city of Seward reserves the right to adjust the order of items on this agenda. If necessary, may elect to take action on any of the items listed. Please call the roll.
Welcome back.
Here.
Captain?
Here.
Fritz?
Here.
Noah?
Here.
Singleton?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Here.
The first item this evening is consideration of approval of draft minutes of August 21, 2018. Yes. Motion in a second to make further discussion.
This is a question, and maybe this isn't the time for it. On the item 14 from that meeting, I wasn't here regarding the loan for the payment on the real estate from the electric department through the general fund. And then it was tabled.
Yep.
Not seeing that on this week's agenda. When is that going to be coming up?
We're going to try and bring it forward on the next one. We're still getting some clarification back from the auditor.
Okay.
So we have a motion in a second as we make further discussion. Sign off, please register your votes. Please play the votes. Item number two, consideration of approval of draft minutes of special budget work session on August 28, 2018. Your motion in a second as we make further discussion. Sign off, please register your votes. Please play the votes. Items three, four, and five were the consent agenda items. We have a motion in a second as we make further discussion. Sign off, please register your votes. Please play the votes. Item six is a public hearing. Notice of hearing and budget summary for the purpose of hearing support, opposition, criticism, suggestions, or observations of taxpayers relating to the 2018-2019 city of Seward municipal budget. Greg?
Yes. We briefly went over the, not briefly, in-depth went over the budget a week ago at the work session. We tried to fill you in on it. We'll try to cover the highlights tonight. And just for the press's concern, if there's anything that's missed over or anything, we can do some follow-up and help you out. The proposed budget this year, as worked together by administration and the mayor, proposes to leave the levy at 31.8 cents. On the city side, the airport authority has the same ask at 3.5 cents with a total levy ask of 35.3 cents. We have worked to try to keep the spending in line in regards to the general fund as requested by the mayor. And so we have, I believe, you'll see an increase in the estimated cash balance of the general fund. Mine may be slightly cut off here due to the way we print mine out. But at least approximately $30,000 in increase on the general fund side. Is that correct? Thank you, councilman. And so that's in keeping with not having a deficit and digging down into our cash reserves on the general fund. As we noted at the work session on the special revenue funds, those are special funds that are designated for the cemetery or they're in relation to economic developments. So C D G L B 840, TIF funds. And so those are independent of everything else. We have our debt service fund, which we fully fund our debt service for the upcoming year. The street fund has a significant decrease in its cash reserves, and that's due to the number of projects that Mel and his crew have lined up that we're going to implement next year. And so seeing the street fund go down is a great thing because that means we're getting projects rolling out rather than sitting on them and trying to get them out the door. So about a $700,000 decrease in cash in the street fund. And then ultimately, we also have our enterprise or business funds, which is the electric, water, and sewer. Electric has a negative balance in the cash reserves of 1.9 million. 1.9 million approximately equates exactly to the cost of the new substation that will go in the proposed rail campus that we had talked about, worked through this summer that we put out for bid, that we were, in speaking with our auditors and looking at our cash reserves in the electric department, we had agreed through this body to go ahead and spend cash, to spend down our cash reserves. That was a good use of our funds to build out that project, which again is the last project in your 10-year electrical plan. And so the deficit you see here is the cash expended for the substation project in the upcoming year. Water, we have a decrease of approximately 44,000 in their cash reserves, as well as sewer at 144,000. Subsequent to the work session, I did receive the pro formas from N M P P, who is doing our rate studies. And we are sitting above in all three cash balances projected into next year with this budget. We're sitting well above and beyond their proposed cash reserves for all three of those business funds. We can walk through projects. We're proposing a 0% increase on electrical utility rates at this time. Again, looking at what the study will ultimately bring us in regards to what we want to set those at. I can look through at, let's see, water. The purposes of, I mean, I'll make sure that we get the numbers out to you. We are proposing a 2.6 rate increase on the water side. On wastewater, we are proposing a 4.5% rate increase. And that's pursuant to the N M P P rate study that was completed last year. We can walk you through from there. Like I said, general fund, we're not eating into the cash reserves on the general fund, and we're spending down because we're in a good cash position on the business funds. If there's any specific projects we want to discuss, capital outlays or anything like that, we can do so.
This is also a public hearing. So if you want, while you're thinking about that, we can open up the public comment portion of item number six. If anyone from the public wishes to comment on this item, please come forward if you'd like, one at a time. Seeing no one, then I would enclose the public comment portion of the public hearing. If anyone from the council have any questions or comments on item number six? If not, yes, Greg.
Mayor's got one last comment. I do, I know I got some of my department heads here tonight. I just want to commend the work they do through the budget process. Ultimately, through their first drafts, we did ask, based on recommendations of the administration in there, for them to tighten hatches and look at different things, to try and make sure that we were not spreading into the cash reserves of the general fund, to protect that status of the general fund. And that was tough work for a lot of those police, libraries, street fund, parks and rec, to look to make sure that we're not eating into our cash reserves. And they were very, very hard and diligently over the last few weeks leading up to submitting this to you to make that happen. And so I want to thank all my department heads and Bonnie for her work over the last few months on this. It's really been a try and experience, as it always is, but I think we've come out with a good product here for you for the consideration of the council and for the citizens of Seward.
So with that, yes, Alan.
Given what you just said about the monies in the utility funds, that's very good news.
Yes.
Does it still justify your rate increases?
I believe, based on your capital, it does. If you look solely from the, if you looked at just the inflation rate, as we all are well aware, inflation's at one of its highest points in a number of years. And I think if you look at the cost and the increase in wages, materials, supplies, Mel can speak to this in regards to what he's seeing in concrete purchases and everything else across the board. We're seeing increased costs. And I think we need to hedge for those cost increase. On the electrical side, I think the reason we're held back is because N P B D, which is the biggest part of ours, is the wholesale purchase. Since they're passing on to zero most likely, as they've had recommended right now, it won't be finalized till February. That's kind of determined on wholesale power purchase. But on the water and the wastewater side, I still think that you need to be competitive with inflation and look at our increased costs. Because we have cost increase across the board. Materials, all, anything associated with our employees, whether that's wages, whether that's benefits, health insurance, everything that's involved. You know, we're seeing increased costs. And the more and more we consider, seeing those increased costs, that's just going to eat into our cash reserves more and more. Ultimately, like I stated in our work session, working with Nick Wolf, our new finance director and treasurer, we're going to work to hopefully establish a cash reserve policy that's built out of parameters set by this body so that we at least have a point that you're comfortable with. And then we talked about it today, on this first day, this afternoon, for extending length of time. There's a number of ways to cut that, but we want you to give us some general parameters to set standards for where you think they need to be, that you're comfortable with. And then we'll build future budgets around them to make sure, you know, when we're sitting at those times where we're above the cash reserves, you can consider giving them back, whether it's offsetting rate increases, maybe giving a rate decrease possibly in the future. But looking at setting those so it's hard and firm. Because right now, we're going off just the methodology that's used by N M P P. And I think there's a number of other methodologies you can look at. But we want it to be set by this body so that we have something that we know we will follow, based on your guidance.
Yes, Sid.
When will we be looking at making those increases?
Those increases, I think, would it take effect after the beginning of the year, correct? On the water wastewater?
They should bring them to us in October?
October.
Yep.
That's when we would be talking about it?
Yep. So, and you can hold those off again. Like I stated, in regards to our wholesale power purchase, that won't even be finalized till February, when we actually see those implemented. And so as we work with them at N P P, we have a number of people that are on our demand rate that we're trying to look at in regards to where they sit in regards to the full market spectrum of wholesale power purchase in the state and see what we can do to offset them a little better. That's been brought to my attention. So we're working diligently and hard to look at it. We might have some other things in regards to how we offset costs for electrical install, for developments, commercial users and things like that. Go look at that formula again as well. But right now, wholesale's zero. I think the other ones are justified in regards to our capital outlet. The other hard part for us, as we mentioned at the work session, is the water wastewater. We've already begun the master plan process. We began that back in June. And I think you'll see a number of capital outlays also. Not putting the cart before the horse, but also with our city engineer coming on. You know, laying that out and looking at some long-term maintenance projects to replace water mains, sanitary sewer mains, things like that. You're going to want to have some funds built up to start taking care of those so we're not fixing everything after it's already broken.
Any questions or comments from the council on item number six? Now then, I will go ahead and close the public hearing. Item number six, and move to item number seven, which is a public hearing. Notice of special hearing for the purpose of hearing support, opposition, criticism, suggestions, or observations of taxpayers relating to setting the final tax at a different amount than the prior year tax request.
Just to noting that the tax request, even though the levy is the same due to the increase in valuations across the entire city, that means our ask for taxes has increased for the coming year. And so this portion of the public hearing is just to denote that we're asking for a different amount than we did with our partner.
Any questions or comments? Again, this is a public hearing, so I'll open up the public comment portion of item number seven. If anyone from the public wish to comment on this item. Seeing no one from the public, we should comment. I will close the public comment portion of the public hearing. Does the council have any other questions or comments? Do you want to go start with A and work our way through? Ready? Okay. So A, this is seven A, consideration for approval of an additional 1% increase in restricted funds. Do you see a motion for this?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second as we make further discussion. Same now, please register your votes. Please play the votes. Item seven B, consideration for approval of 2018-2019 municipal budget and authorize the filing of budget forms. We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Same now, please register your votes. Please play the votes. Item C is consideration of a resolution for 2018-2019 property tax requests different from property tax requests for prior year. I'll introduce the resolution. The resolution has been introduced, and it's designated as resolution number 2018-16. Anyone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted?
Move.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Please register your votes. Please play the votes. Item seventeen, this is consideration of an ordinance for adoption of the municipal budget to appropriate sums for necessary expenses and liabilities to provide for an effective date and include an additional 1% in restricted funds.
Introduce the ordinance.
An ordinance to adopt the budget statements to be termed the budget and annual appropriation bill to appropriate sums for necessary expenses and liabilities, which includes an additional 1% increase in restricted funds to provide for an effective date to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form. The ordinance has been read by toggle, and it's designated as ordinance number 2018-18. And the title is hereby approved. I need one, I need a motion to dispense with the statutory rule.
I'll move.
Second.
We have a motion in a second as we make further discussion. Same now, please register your votes. Please play the votes. Again, this is ordinance number 2018-18. Would anyone like to move that this ordinance be passed and adopted? That's right. We have a motion in a second as we make further discussion. Same now, please register your votes. The question is, should ordinance number 2018-18 be finally passed and adopted? Please play the votes. That's the only ordinance for this evening, so only one final motion to make the ordinance a part of the permanent record.
So.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Please register your votes. Please play the votes. Okay, item eight, public hearing. Consideration of the proposed acquisition of real property, commonly referred to as 246 North Third Street, Seward, Nebraska, for the purpose of expansion on the volunteer fire department facility. Greg, do you join?
Yeah. We, a number of weeks back, were contacted by the family that currently owns property located at 246 North Third. This had been a property that had been notated within a number of budgets for years and had been discussed as a potential site acquisition for the city of Seward's volunteer fire department and fire hall for expansion. Ultimately, the family contacted us, stated that they were looking to sell, and gave the city the opportunity to negotiate a price with them over that, which is presented to you here today. We went through and had the required state statutory appraisal done and then negotiated with the family and came up with the final number of $185,000. This is presented to you here today. The purchase agreement, first this agreement was drafted up by city attorney Hoff Schneider. And then it is executable in five separate parts, basically, because we have four family members that live all over the nation that ultimately we were going to try and close this one out should it be approved tonight by the end of the fiscal year. And so we're going to send those off to be notarized and signed all over the place and work to get that cleaned up. Any other specifics in regards to the site acquisition thing? Also, I believe councilman Singleton could help out with the discussion on that.
Any questions or comments this time? It is a public hearing, so I would open it up to the public for the public comment portion. If anyone from the public wish to comment on item eight? Seeing no one, then I will close the comment, the public comment portion of the public hearing. If anyone from the council wish to comment? Yes, Alan.
The only comment I've received, the council received are, basically, we need to see a plan for the fire department, long-term, five to 10 years, was mentioned. There's no objection to this at all, but it just, we just need a plan.
And the fire department is looking at it, as well as other projects.
Unless there's any other questions or comments, we can move to item eight A, which is the resolution. Consideration of a resolution authorizing the acquisition of certain real property, commonly referred to as 246 North Third Street, legally described as lots four, five, six, and seven, block 34, Chloes addition to the city of Seward, Edward County, Nebraska.
Introduce your resolution.
The resolution has been introduced, and it's designated as resolution number 2018-17. Would anyone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Please register your votes. Please play the votes. Item B, this is consideration for approval of a purchase agreement for acquisition of certain real property, commonly referred to as 246 North Third Street, Seward, Nebraska, and authorization for the mayor to execute all documents related to the acquisition. We have a motion, is there a second? We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes. Please play the votes. Item nine, appointment and oath of office for appointed officials. We have Jake Bassett, our city engineer, on nine A. And we have a consideration of an appointment agreement with Jake as nine B.
Jake, come on up. As you may know, this might be a familiar face to you. Jake comes from, you can hang out at the podium, Jake, until we make you actually do the.
You make your assistant chief real nervous when you start approaching the mayor.
Again, this was a position that was created out of kind of the zoning director or the mixed-use position that we had John Hughes in before that we've not filled. As you approved your budget last year, we created the position of city engineer. We have a significant number of projects going on, whether that's development projects, a number of projects that Mel is involved with, that the street crew, water and wastewater projects that we felt, along with parks as well. There's a significant amount, as you'll hear later, of engineering going on in our parks. We felt that, based on that area of our budget, we were able to go out competitively at that same amount in regards to salary and recruit an engineer to come and offset some of the costs that we're paying off to various engineering firms. And have an advocate that works on behalf of the city, as much as Jake and others working in the private capacity have done a great job at advocating for the city. Ultimately, their responsibility lies outside of the city and working with private development groups and things like that. So now we have an advocate that works directly with the city. Hopefully, we can find significant savings and work through our own projects, also do project planning. As you know, with all the agreements we're working on, updating our G I S and building up a system that is to the level of quality I think that the citizens of Seward and developers expect in regards to G I S technology and everything else. And so Jake was one of the applicants. He comes to us with significant knowledge, as you may know, of the city of Seward, our current projects, our utilities, has a master's degree in engineering, highly respected in the field. And so we're excited to have him. Just to point on his employment agreement, we just wanted to make sure that we, anything that's outside of the portion of the handbook that's in there, we want this body to ultimately authorize, not do that internally within administration. And so in there is a, I believe, authorization for a payment to Olson for offsetting and paying off a portion of contractual obligations that Jake has with Olson to free him from his employment. I think that's 6,000.
368.
368. And that's part of a tuition element as well for his master's degree. I think that transferred over from J E O, actually. And then I think we just denote that we're loading him up front in regards to vacation. He's not getting any more vacation than anybody else gets. We're just moving it to the front of his employment. And then the last one is just denoting he'll have a phone. There'll be a city phone. We might change that up. We're still working on that when he gets here this week. But similar to my phone, this is a city phone. So all my city work is done through it. If somebody, you know, I have to turn it in when I'm done, when I leave, I can go back. So we just wanted to denote that. And so those are the only things in there. There's nothing that goes beyond. He's not, he's not a contract employee to the extent that I am. When my contract runs out, I need another contract. This is just to outline anything and approve it beyond the guise of the handbook. So that's what the agreement's for. But we want to make sure we spelled it out, disclosed everything, and got it out in front of you.
So all that said, I'm appointing Jake Bassett as the city engineer.
Yeah. There you go.
Yes. Any questions or comments, or would someone like to make a motion? We have a motion in a second. Please register your votes. Please play the votes. And then item, do you want to do B first? Let's do B real quick then. The consideration of an employment agreement with Jake is item nine B.
Move it through.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Please register your votes. Please play the votes. This is, yeah, this is where you do the oath that you're not going to overthrow the government. We're pretty strict about that.
Okay. I'm going to read this, and you do not have to repeat after me. I, Jake Bassett, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Nebraska and the ordinances of the city of Seward, Nebraska, against all enemies, foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the saying that I take this obligation freely and without mortal reservation or purpose of evasion. That I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of the office of city engineer of the city of Seward, Nebraska, attending to all and to the best of my ability. And I therefore swear that I do not advocate nor am I a member of any political party or organization that advocates the overthrow of the government of the United States or of this state by force or violence. And that during such time as I am in this position, I will not advocate nor become a member of any political party or organization that advocates the overthrow of the government of the United States or of this state by force or violence.
Welcome. Did you want to say anything while you're up there?
Sure. I guess a little background on me. I am from Wahoo originally. I live there currently. Went to Bishop Newman High School. Graduated in 2004. Went to University of Nebraska-Lincoln for my civil engineering degree. Graduated in 2008. Then got a job with J E O. I had an internship there a couple of years earlier. So I worked for J E O for 10 years, from 2006 to 2016. While at J E O, I first got into airports design. Worked on our airports team. Three years after doing that, I moved to our transportation team, which was mostly roads, bridges, things like that. So I got into a lot of bridge inspection, got into a lot of roadway and storm sewer design. And then in 2006, left J E O for Olson. And that was in the land development team and did a lot of work as far as things like site design, pad design, and also residential and commercial developments. And still, still a lot in roads as well. So that's kind of my work background. I got my master's degree in 2015. After working for J E O for a couple of years, I started packing away my master's degree. So I got that in 2015, some master's degree in construction engineering. Just kind of a unique degree where your focus is construction, civil engineering, and business. So it's kind of more set up professionals. Yeah, I have three kids. I have a wife. They stay busy, coach football. Any other questions about me or anyone else? I've done a lot.
Coach little kids football or Bishop Newman?
What's that?
You coach for Bishop Newman or little kids football?
No, I don't coach for Bishop Newman.
All right. I like it.
I've done a lot of projects in my career, just getting projects done. So that whole process is very, very easy for me, very what I'm used to. But I'm also, I've done a lot of street studies, things like that, too. I look at, you know, your standards and things like that, and I see a big opportunity to improve those as well and kind of help protect the city and improve infrastructure through those means as well.
You and your family, do you live in here?
Nope. Nope. We actually just moved to a different house in Wahoo. But I kind of like that, uh, that, um, that perspective gives me kind of an objective view of the city of Seward as whole rather than this is my street and this is so-and-so's street and blah, blah, blah. Kind of an outsider's point of view where more objective than, than anything, so.
You'll learn who lives where. Don't worry about that.
Very quickly, I'll remind you.
Well, I just want to say we're very excited to have Jake on board. This position we've been wanting to fill for a while and we feel there's a definite need in the city for this position as we start shuffling. And we shuffle some responsibilities in City Hall, um, to have our own City Engineer will definitely think be a savings, uh, on one end with, with, with projects that he's able to do that we normally would bid out for, um, as well as having someone who is seeing the big picture. And this is kind of like his SimCity now. He, he's responsible for, for that. So for that, I just want to say welcome and thank you for joining, joining the city of Seward.
Thank you.
Item number ten, consideration of membership agreement with the Seward County Chamber and Development Partnership. Jonathan, did you want to take this one up?
Thank you, Mayor.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Six there, six here. Dick, pass this down, please. I apologize for not responding to the second email. It's signed as it today. Well, thank you for the opportunity to, um, present this evening. Um, we do this on an annual basis and so I know, um, you should all be fairly familiar with this process. Um, but, but I first of all just want to start off by saying thank you to the city of Seward for your investments in the Seward County Chamber and Development Partnership, um, both on the, uh, board commitment side. Um, obviously Ellen represents you, uh, on our, on our Board of Directors, but also through your financial investment in our organization. Uh, I just want to, um, really say kudos and, and, uh, express our appreciation for Ellen's efforts on our board. She's been extremely active. Um, she shows up to meetings and really is, uh, participates well and she represents the city of Seward very well. So we're grateful for her, um, investment of time on our organization's Board of Directors. Uh, we want to briefly review our public sector funding agreement as we do annually. Uh, that is our, what defines our formal relationship. And so, um, in your packet, uh, is the, um, is the funding agreement between the, uh, city of Seward and the Seward County Chamber and Development, um, Partnership. And so I'm going to briefly, uh, walk through those items and so we're all, uh, familiar with how our relationship is defined. Um, the agreement itself is signed from October first of last year to September thirtieth of this year. We're obviously not to that point yet, uh, but, um, it's budget time and so practically speaking, we come around this, this time of year, uh, to, to fit within that timeline. Um, the city's annual investment was sixty-seven thousand five hundred in our organization and it was for that fiscal year two thousand and seventeen, eighteen. And it was spent towards the operations of the SCCDP and according to Nebraska State statute. The public funds were and they are segregated in a separate bank account and the funds have only been used, uh, for the purposes of economic development. There was an annual, um, internal audit that was conducted within sixty days of June thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen, to ensure compliance with the agreement. And proof of that audit was of course emailed to you, uh, within the last few weeks. Uh, we'd like the city of Seward to consider renewing, uh, your supportive economic development efforts in Seward County. So we're entering into a new funding agreement and public membership agreement. I realize those are two separate agenda items with our organization for your upcoming fiscal year. Uh, a part of the document that I just handed out, um, is an economic development projects document that highlights some of the work we've been, um, that we've been doing between two thousand and seventeen and two thousand and eighteen. Uh, the developments have taken place all across the county and are highlighting just a few of our, our recent efforts. I'd like to point your attention to one quote in particular, uh, from Chelsea Cosmicke and Lacy Cook. They're the new owners of Cafe on the Square. They said, "The Seward County Chamber and Development Partnership has helped us with our business from day one. They helped finance, helped us finance to get our business off the ground and since then continue to support us by personally giving us their business, sharing our marketing efforts and letting the community know we're here. The SCCDP is constantly looking for ways to help the community grow." I wanted to share this because I think the quote does a really nice job of articulating the various ways that our organization can and does help existing businesses, but also new businesses, um, that are getting started up like what, uh, Lacy and Chelsea did with restarting Cafe on the Square. And that's what we do to help grow Seward County. Um, I also, uh, really enjoy mentioning my two coworkers, Megan Kaler and Suzanne Glorovich. Uh, just wonderful coworkers, hardworking, uh, focused on a lot of different, uh, supporting important community and economic development projects. And you get to see their work, of course, each quarter, uh, when we send out our quarterly reports, um, to you. And I, I just personally would say, I think all of us feel really fortunate to be in the roles that we're in. Uh, we love this community. We love this county. We're grateful for the opportunity to serve, um, through the Seward County Chamber Development Partnership. I'd like to have Ellen briefly talk, um, about her role on our Board of Directors and, um, she happens to be our Board Chair right now. So this is, um, uh, you know, pretty apropos that she would be sharing. Um, I'd like her to talk a little bit about the progress she's seen in our organization, um, and, uh, and also ultimately why she thinks, um, you know, Seward has made a good investment in our organization. So Ellen.
Thank you, Jonathan. Um, I have had the privilege of being the Board Chair for this year and I think it's been a year of growth and maturity for SCCDP and Jonathan can outline all the projects that he's worked on and, and he and his team have been very busy for Seward and Seward County and Utica and Milford. Um, but for the SCCDP itself, uh, it's been a, a year of being able to settle in to take a look at our budgeting and, and where we are as far as public funding versus private funding and, and see it's a, it's a good mix and getting better. Um, we have, uh, as a board, cut back on the number of our meetings. Jonathan has grown more comfortable in just handling the day-to-day operations of SCCDP. And beyond that, has been able to take a look at advanced budgeting out of several years. So we can take a look at where we need to go as far as increasing, uh, private membership and, and private monies for this. But it's also allowed, uh, Jonathan and the staff to take a look at the programs and, uh, the projects that have been traditionally done by both the Chamber and Economic Development, um, analyze them, take a good look. Is this what we need to do? Uh, do we need changes? Is this the best, uh, way to spend our time? And so that's kind of been an ongoing process this year. I think it's very healthy. We, um, eh, when you have this umbrella organization, it's a great, um, front for when developers come in and they see a united county as far as economic development goes, but we also balance that all the time with chamber duties and the responsibilities that we have for our local businesses. Um, and that's, you know, always still going to be a, a very important part of it. So Jonathan's got a great grasp on this. He, uh, is very diligent in attending to both the chamber side activities and economic development activities. So I think going forward, we're in a very solid place. We have, um, a good projection of where we are financially and where we need to be. And, um, I, I think the next few years are going to be exciting as Jonathan works with us to develop more, uh, for the rail campus and downtown economic development. So I would very respectfully ask for your support for this funding.
Thank you. Again, just want to reiterate, um, our appreciation as an organization for your investments in the Seward County Chamber and Development Partnership. And last year we had asked our public sector members, uh, to make approximately a ten percent increase, uh, to help, um, invest from what they had the previous year. And we asked this because our scope of services and our ability to impact economic development in Seward County continue to grow. And, um, to Ellen's point, our public sector investments account for approximately one-third of our budget. As we look at trying to create a sustainable model, uh, we think that that's a, a healthy, uh, range, about a third coming from the public and about two-thirds coming from, um, from the private sector. And, um, and so practically speaking, we're asking for the same level of investment that we did last year, um, from Seward City Council at sixty-seven thousand five hundred. And, um, would specifically ask that you consider, uh, moving forward the, um, funding agreement as well as the public, uh, membership agreements that are before you. And of course, I would be willing to answer any questions. Appreciate your time.
Any questions or comments from the council on item number ten? This is specifically the fun, this is just the membership agreement is the first item we're looking at. You have a motion and a second. Please register for a discussion. Seeing none, please register your votes. Please sway the votes. And eleven would be consideration of funding agreement, uh, with the Seward County Chamber and Development Partnership. Yes, Chris.
You know, I just want to, I want to make the comment. I mean, I, I think I maybe made this comment last year. I mean, our, our bang for our buck on this, having been involved with everything happening at the rail campus and what's going on. I mean, Jonathan's been doing an excellent job juggling multiple projects, as we all know, that we've heard about through closed sessions and whatnot, so. As, as far as, uh, the ask on this, I mean, it's, uh, it's cheap right now for what we're getting folks.
Move it through.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Please register for a discussion. Seeing none, please register your votes. Please sway the votes. Thanks, Jonathan.
Thank you.
Item number twelve, consideration of a request to display small American flags on city property on Highway thirty-four. This is, uh, near the parade of flags area on September eleventh, twenty-eight. We recognize him and victims of the September eleven, two thousand and one attacks. Do you have someone? Yes, come forward.
Angela contacted me today and she had another meeting she had to get to, so we have someone else representing her request.
Could you state your name and address for us, please?
Um, Thomas, eight hundred North Longview Avenue, Seward, Nebraska.
Thank you. Welcome. Could you give us some background on this item?
Um, it's like, uh, they're doing the memorial, like the nine eleven.
Hmm.
So they already got the flags donated.
Okay.
About three thousand that they would like to put up, but they're doing it out of like for the victims. So, and for the community. She explained it pretty well. The intention behind it was like to display that no victim is ever forgotten. We would like, we'll put out the flags, pick them up the evening, and if there's bad weather and stuff, we'll be there, pick them up. Make sure someone's always looking after the flags throughout the whole day.
And so the council knows, I mean, typically we don't get requests, I guess, too often. And so we, we thought it would be appropriate to, uh, bring it to the council so that you could hear the proposal and make determination whether you thought this was something that, um, we should, uh, you know, I guess allow on our property.
Any questions or comments from the council, I guess, Greg?
I just note, uh, Angela did also contact Kiwanis, who has been instrumental in the parade of flags and spoke with them. And Kiwanis was supportive of the project as well. And I talked to Mark Taylor about that and he did confirm that as well, that Kiwanis was in support of this. And so we just wanted to make sure that all parties that are involved in the parade of flags, uh, we'll have Bob Core go out if this is approved ultimately and make sure we work with, uh, the organization to make sure they know where the state right-of-way is, so we stay off the state right-of-way and try to, to keep coordinated so we don't get a call from the DOT, so.
Chris?
I don't know if you know or if you know, I mean, is this a one-time thing or is this something that they're going to plan on doing every year?
Um, Angela was like talking about looking after the flags and stuff. And if it's a good thing or not, she said it's something that they can continue doing, the club.
For tonight's purposes, though, this is a one-time approval.
Any other questions or comments?
I move it through.
Okay.
You have a motion and a second. Please register for a discussion.
Yeah, Sid, you second me, ready?
Yeah, I'm ready. Thank you.
Please register your votes. Please sway the votes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Item thirteen, consideration for authorization. Houston May Land and Water Conservation Fund grant for Fairway Woods Park.
Um, yes, working with the developers of Fairway Woods, uh, as we had previously planned and plotted, we had a design for a park running along, uh, the north face of the first base that will, I came, Jake, do we, let's look through here. Since you're here and now you're officially a member of this crew, uh, along Woodside Drive, there you go. On Woodside Drive, uh, we have a three-plus acre park area that we've designated with a trail running through it and then an area for, uh, detention. There you go. We got, I'm getting this down. And also for a playground and a shelter. It was always the initial discussion that neither the developer nor the city initially was going to put in any specific stuff for the shelter or the park because we felt like this was a perfect match to go look at land water conservation funds. Uh, a grant that the city of Seward has utilized, especially in the seventies, a little bit in the eighties. I don't think we've done a ton of projects since then. Um, in my previous life, working with the city of Beatrice, uh, I had helped secure a number of those grants for them for ballpark developments, trails, shelters, uh, playground approvals, uh, up in Hannibal Park, if you're familiar with Hannibal Park, where they play baseball, softball, Beatrice. So I felt like this was just a great match. It ticks, this sort of development ticks off all the things that the state is looking for in those grant funds. Uh, I also spoke with the grant administrator and walked him through our whole project. So initially our discussion within the city was to just put up a playground, piece of playground equipment, a shelter like we normally do and be done with it. You know, your kind of your standard playground equipment, you see in Carol Kane, things like that. And when we saw the bang for our buck we could get, it was just kind of not exciting in regards to, this is kind of going to be a very interesting park area with the fact that the trail will run through the trees. If you've been up there right now and seen kind of where they've done their clearing, uh, it's going to be kind of a majestic trail and park. And so I shared our initial plans with the developers and said, "I don't know that this really matches, uh, maybe what your vision was. Can we look at some other options?" And what they ultimately did was they went out and engaged Clark Anderson, um, and agreed to pay for the development design cost and put together this plan, uh, for the park before you. I don't know how much you briefed through it, but, uh, ultimately, uh, the plan walks through a number of things. It talks about the history of, of developing and the shelter belts factoring, the Roosevelt, Franklin Roosevelt administration and the Dust Bowl. Uh, it talks about the current importance of the trees and wildlife that are there. Lays out the current plan. They're going to realign what was a circle before. They're going to stretch that out. They're going to allow the trail to basically bypass the way we had before with the circle. We were always kind of concerned that people on their bikes were going to go right through the middle of the playground. They'd just come out the other end. So they've kind of realigned the trail to offset the playground area. They added designs for what will be known as a trailhead on Eighth Street. That will be the entrance to the trail and there'll be a trailhead, basically kind of an archway place giving that defines that you're entering a space. So that's part of the design as well. Uh, they'll be, they want to really reinforce the fact this is a wooded area. Have you seen it here? There'll be concrete impressions with leaves and designs like that, spaces for public art that will come later through other means. Um, noting that it's on a trail, they're looking to have, uh, bicycle access, so they'll also have bike, uh, racks and lockups there, uh, that meet kind of the artistic motif that they're putting on. And then we get into what, what I think is one of the neatest parts is the play components. Uh, Clark Anderson was able to track down, uh, play components and these are in your packet on page one eighty-one. Uh, their play components, rather than your standard neon yellow and pink and purple and green plastic, uh, they have play components that are designed with a wood motif, where they almost look like trees and hollowed-out trees and other elements like that that really match the design of Fairway Woods. And I think this is just a great, when we saw this, Bob Core and I met with the developers just a week and a half ago and we saw this design in our heads because we said, "This is perfect." And so they also have some other extra equipments and tunnels, balance beams, all with that wood motif design. And then also a, an outdoor play musical set. It's a marumba. And basically, uh, just gives kids interactive things to play with sound. Uh, we did note that it's also not super loud, so kids are playing on there. We don't believe it's going to disturb neighbors and things like, it's a low tone. Uh, because that was brought up in the meeting. We didn't want to make neighbors in the Fairway Woods development mad because some kids, uh, go and mark Lars Ulrich over there and trying to recreate, recreate Metallica greatest hits or something. Uh, ultimately, the Little Free library, we're going to remove that from the final request for the grant. We think that would make a great service project element for somebody, uh, different organizations, Ugo Scouts, things like that. Uh, we weren't exactly sure if it would qualify to meet the qualifications for the grant, so that'll be one element that'll come out. Uh, as you see, the trash receptacles, uh, picnic benches and seated benches, uh, all covered projects. They'll meet a match, a motif, color design. covered projects, they'll meet a match, a motif, color design and everything else for the area. And then the other big one is the shade structure, they wanted to go with a shade structure that was kind of different from what we find in other places, and so they have a tinsel shade structure, kind of resembles a leaf in regards to the way it's set up. Uh, they're looking at a hard, uh, panel one rather than the canvas one, due to the fact that we do understand that there are trees overhead, leaves and everything else that's gonna fall on it, we think snow and stuff would cause some pretty significant deterioration in the canvas version versus, uh, something that's a hard surface, but they do have hard surface ones as well. Um, then they go through and they provide, uh, a very intricate, detailed, uh, landscaping concept for all elements of the park, including the detention pond, adding more canvas and, and, or not canvas, but, uh, landscaping in regards to the trees and design like that to really give it a sense of space, this wooded area. Um, a number of recommended, uh, landscape concepts to basically do what they call is a, uh, Mexican meadow, uh, lots of pollinator flowers and things like that, uh, we'll be going over this in our own internal review, but they really designed it to be low maintenance. That was one of the biggest things that was talked about in the development of Fairway Woods and us taking over this parkland, is are we gonna be mowing it all the time, is it gonna be this big trudge on us to drag mowers back out there for another park? And so what they've done is tried to design it, uh, through all elements to be low maintenance, even in the landscape, uh, the shade tolerant ground cover, so we don't put out just grass everywhere under this, under the shade trees. And so they've really designed it and worked through it and worked through Bob Core's group to try and come up with something that is, uh, significant, it's different from anything else we've done, so it gives a sense of a place that everybody in the city, it's not just for Fairway Woods, it's really designed to be a place that anybody in the city would wanna come and experience an outdoor recreational area that's different from an asset we already have, we don't need to remake the same asset, let's do something different. Uh, and so that's, that's kind of the design element, there on page one ninety-eight, though, you see the budget, the total budget estimated by Clark Anderson, a hundred and eighty-six thousand approximately, you can take out a thousand or so for the, uh, little library, but other than that, um, it's a hundred and eighty-six thousand is the estimated cost to implement those phases, they actually gave us a phased approach just in case funding wasn't there. Ultimately, in sitting down, uh, and I have a letter that I can denote to you, uh, from the Wake Charitable Foundation, in speaking with the developers, uh, the Wake Foundation, the Charitable Foundation, agreed to donate to the city as an additional match, every dollar that we have on our side, we can leverage fifty-fifty match, one-to-one dollars. They agreed to cover fifty, up to fifty thousand dollars, above and beyond the fifty thousand that you've actually approved in your budget, but we had set aside fifty thousand to try and match with the land water conservation fund, they're gonna throw in another fifty thousand, and so we will easily, hopefully, with approval of this grant, fully fund the whole park in one shot, and build the whole thing out and be done with it, rather than even the phased approach. Uh, and so I did get a, uh, an email letter here from Max Wake, Vice President of the Wake Charitable Foundation, not going into a bunch of stuff, but, uh, an incredible gift to the city to match that up to fifty thousand to make sure that we can put in a full ask for the whole project.
Thanks, Greg. So, uh, item thirteen A, that's the consideration for approval of the Fairway Woods park design, and then B will be the resolution authorizing, uh, submit of the grant. Um, any question or comments from the council?
Move to approve A.
We have a motion?
Second.
We motion and a second is ready for the discussion on item thirteen A, seeing none, please register your votes, please display the votes.
Governor, welcome back, Captain Fritz and another single Schmidt.
And B is consideration of a resolution authorizing submit of LWCF grant application and city matching funds of fifty thousand dollars.
How long is this resolution?
Resolution has been introduced and it designated as resolution number twenty-eighteen dash eighteen, would anyone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted?
No.
But the motion and a second, please register your votes, please display the votes.
Governor, welcome back, Captain Fritz and another single Schmidt.
Item fourteen, consideration for awarding bid for, uh, ten fourteen MVA power transformer purchase industrial substation. Greg?
We have Garrett here from Olson and Associates, our electrical engineer, and he'll kind of walk you through this element of the substation and the big process to put this forward.
Thank you, I'm Garrett Connel of Olson and Associates, um, these are the bids for the industrial substation transformer, the one that, uh, Mr. Butcher mentioned in the budget discussion. Um, we opened them back on July twenty-fourth, received eight bids, um, five sort of in a range at the low end and, and three in a range at the high end. Uh, the, the power transformer is the heart of the substation, um, obviously a very expensive piece of equipment, yeah, it's expected to last out there for forty or fifty years. Um, we are very thorough in our evaluation of these bids. Um, in the letter, we go through a couple of the components of the evaluation, uh, purchase price is one of them, obviously, when they can deliver it, that's gonna be another one. Um, we require them to submit, uh, the guaranteed losses, the thing's gonna lose a certain amount of energy as heat, um, and they're not all the same, so each bidder's gonna try to optimize, you know, what can we build it for versus how efficient it is, they could make one really, really efficient, but it's gonna be very expensive, they could make one completely inefficient, and it's gonna be inexpensive. So we evaluate, uh, the lost costs based on what your purchase power costs are, so we have a very real number there. Um, after that, we get into a little more of the, uh, subjective stuff. Um, conformance with specifications, we require, for example, that they prove that they've made fifty transformers, um, same size or greater, uh, similar characteristic of this one. Uh, we will get submittals and they will say, wow, we haven't quite made fifty, uh, but we've made thirty-eight, those kinds of things. Um, so we go through all of those elements, um, and then some, sometimes there's legal exceptions, like, we will not accept the terms and conditions that, that we bid on, but here's ours instead. Um, those we, we don't like because we, we lose a lot of protections that are in the documents for the city and, and, and there's a lot of extra risk, um, taken on. Long and short of it is, the lowest, one, two, three, four bids had issues in multiple of those areas. Um, the one that was fifth, um, was the one that came the closest, uh, I should caveat that there was one of the higher group that probably was closer, uh, but the, the price range was, was substantial. Um, but Pennsylvania Transformer came, came the closest with a couple of minor exceptions, um, one of which, for example, was, uh, the payment schedule, we specified there will be ten percent at this point, eighty percent at this point, and the final, ten percent, uh, at the very end when it's delivered, um, their schedule would have had twenty-five percent and, and something similar, there was no additional risk for the city, um, minor comparison to the other side. So all that said, um, in our opinion, um, the proposal that, that best meets suspicion is in the best interest of the city is from Pennsylvania Transformer, and we're recommending it to them, uh, for their bid amount of four hundred and thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and eighty-two dollars.
Thank you, any questions or comments from the council? We have, uh, item A, fourteen A, this is a consideration of resolution declaring the official intent to issue tax-exempt bond anticipation notes for bonds for, and in addition to declare the city's reasonable expectations to reimburse certain expenditures with the proceeds of the bonds. Okay, so we have fourteen first and fourteen A. Okay, so the first issue would be, for your consideration is fourteen, uh, which is, uh, awarding the bid.
Move to approve.
Second.
The motion and a second, please register your votes, please display the votes.
Governor, welcome back, Captain Fritz and another single Schmidt.
And then fourteen A, this is the, the consideration of the resolution.
Just so there's, um, no confusion, is, it talks about bonding it, the, um, discussion and decision was to pay cash, however, this, I guess I'll say protects us, if down the road we decided we did want to bond it, this document is in place and it has to do with the timing of, uh, when we purchase items and when you can bond it, so there's like a sixty-day window in there, so it's just a protection piece, you still plan on using cash for it.
That was my question.
Yeah, if it, if it changes, we just wanna cover all bases, i- if this body were pivoted at some point in the future, 'cause this is also a very long-term.
Yes.
Project.
Thirty-week lead.
Yeah, so, uh, we wanna make sure that anything changes in the meantime, we're covered, so, this is just precaution.
How long is this resolution? Resolution has been introduced and is designated as resolution number twenty-eighteen dash nineteen, would anyone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted?
So will.
The motion, is there a second?
Second.
The motion and a second, please register your votes, please display the votes.
Governor, welcome back, Captain Fritz and another single Schmidt.
Thanks, Garrett.
Thank you.
Item fifteen, consideration of agreement with GIS Workshop LLC for simple city website hosting, maintenance, do data maintenance, site updates and general support. Greg?
Yes, this is just our annual, uh, well, it's not annual, there's obviously different contract ranges, uh, but this is just the hosting of our GIS workshop that we have available online, that we look at, that we make available some elements to the public, and so, uh, pretty standard, again, three percent increase, we requested and the document is drafted for a one-year renewal, uh, but I did lay out, uh, in the administrative report, the three options we had, uh, I think we'll, I did confirm that GIS was a good one to work with, with our tentative city engineer at the time now, our permanent city engineer, uh, for the time being, that, that this is a good platform to continue to work with, and so we just recommend one year at this time and then we'll reevaluate when we get next year.
So fifteen A is the master services agreement and then fifteen B is the simple city subscription renewal agreement. For your consideration. Any questions or comments? If someone like to make a motion on fifteen A?
Move to approve.
Okay. Do a motion and a second, please register your votes, please display the votes.
Governor, welcome back, Captain Fritz and another single Schmidt.
And on fifteen B, simple city subscription renewal agreement?
Move to approve, not approve, one year. Is that right?
Yeah, it is drafted as one year, too.
Good. And then your second.
John.
Oh, yes, second. Motion and a second, please register your votes, please display the votes.
Governor, welcome back, Captain Fritz and another single Schmidt.
Item sixteen, same entry report.
Uh, just two big project ones and I'll be quiet, you know, I'm full. Uh, the first one is when the monsoon season's over, Mel will be able to get back to East Seward and get started, that will be dry, that big out, um, and so that is a continual project that his, his group is out there getting ready to work on and they're getting forward for that section. Uh, the other one is, we are, uh, continuing to work with NDOT and BNSF, and I'm no clue where that ended up today, I had another engagement, uh, for economic development stuff, and Mel, if you wanna go ahead and just.
Yeah.
Get it up and update us on what they said today.
I met you guys, yeah, I met at two o'clock with NDOT and, uh, the Royal Road Master, Scott Farrell, his name, and we came to an agreement that, uh, the state and my crew will go out and mill down the approaches to those tracks on West Thirty-four, and we're gonna do that tomorrow morning at eight o'clock. So we'll, we've got signs and barricades and free, uh, a work zone ready to go early in the morning, so we'll, we'll just take one lane at a time and work on one side of the highway and, and probably the next day, depends on how fast we can get it done, but, uh, we'll do one, one side of the road at a time, so, uh, uh, NDOT is, is going to work with the railroad and help whenever they get their money going or whatever, their projects going, that the state of Nebraska is gonna help fund that crossing and make it the way it should be, right now this is kind of a mandate fix, but it's going to improve it. Um, and that's, that was the agreement today, that here in the future, it might take about a year, just depends how long it takes, but NDOT's working with the railroad, this is two of the railroad guys from NDOT, and, um, so they're gonna stay with the railroad and hopefully get this done as soon as possible, we're doing the railroad, so.
Is NDOT, or, or are they gonna help provide the milling?
NDOT and, and myself, our equipment will do the milling, railroad's gonna bring a piece of equipment and some manpower as well, they're gonna help us out and, uh, take care of this milling now. Um, but what the whole project's gonna involve is starting kind of west or north of the tracks, and they have got to redo the whole subsurface, redo the tracks and the panels and clear over to Elm Street, and that portion of Elm Street will probably be our cost to help with that.
They have an estimate on the Elm Street crossing, uh, we'll discuss it at a future meeting, 'cause there'll have to be some agreements between us and BNSF, uh, but I think it's, we're, it's headed in the past before, but they're interested in making a proposal to us of either repairing that or closing it, so we'll have to take that into consideration one way or the other, but for them to do the full scale of it, because it's their decking, they're gonna need to repair Elm Street as well.
Thanks, Mel, for the update.
Yeah.
Any, like, any, anything else?
I have nothing else.
Are there any questions, yes, Alan?
Beginning with Dr. Fields, we're going to zoning around the middle school.
Yes, this relates back to the zoning issues we talked about in regards to, uh, the Shoal Creek development that kind of came about in the map, we decided the first step of that, now that Shoal Creek has been settled by the council a few months back, they got our head above water, we wanna revisit that issue up there, and so the first step was deciding what ultimately the zoning that the school district wanted for that area. And so we met with Dr. Fields and I think he's gonna meet with his board, me and Ed are gonna come to his board meeting, uh, and speak to him October, and then once they're settled, then we'll move into the residential areas along Rainbow in there, and we'll talk to those residents and then redo their zoning as well, back to, I think, what was originally done and proposed. And so clean that area up, then hopefully with our GIS information accurate and, and the way we keep track of planning and zoning changes from now on, uh, that we won't have these sorts of headaches again.
And your map will be ready?
Hopefully, I haven't had a map on my wall since we found that thing, 'cause no one, no one wants to trust me with it anymore, I might point something out that may not have been accurate.
Any questions or comments, or whether you're getting a motion to accept the same entry report?
Move to approve.
The motion and a second, please register your votes, please display the votes.
Governor, welcome back, Captain Fritz and another single Schmidt.
Any future requests for council, council agenda items or amendment action? Yes?
Uh, I had a complaint come in and the, the person asked if we would bring this up for council discussion possibly, four thirty-nine South Columbia, the alley in behind there, um, and possibly, what it is, is this time of year we have college kids that come in and citizens rent out properties and that, well, uh, the kids are driving excess of speeds in the alleys, and we have a lot of children at play, and, and maybe we need to go and approach the ordinance on what the speed limits are on, in our alleys and maybe consider changing what our speed limits are. If they are twenty-five miles an hour in an alley, uh, to me, that's not acceptable. Um, you know, especially in the old part of town, um, the widths of our alleys are a lot narrower than the newer parts, and that's something I think we need to put on the agenda to review, maybe discuss, or maybe something, we could do something as a temporary fix, you know, especially on this one right away since it's a concern, uh, maybe a speed bump or something, you know, until we can resolve some of these issues, so.
Thank you, any other items? Seeing none, uh, Jonathan left us, so I don't know.
Ignite the flight.
Ignite the flight, that stuff that's coming up, I'm not sure what else is, so with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Please register your votes, please display the votes.
Governor, welcome back, Captain Fritz and another single Schmidt.
Thank you all, have a good night.
Hey, John.